Recording in progress.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, July 11, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Jeff, may you call the role for the Commissioners who are present and not?
Absolutely. So Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Privatelli is absent, and Commissioner Samuzi is absent. Commissioner Shock?
Present.
Commissioner Haveman?
Present.
And Commissioner Chair Sade?
Present.
And Commissioner Rodby?
Present.
And did I pronounce?
Present.
Okay.
We'll move to the order of the agenda. Are there any Commissioners that like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. Next, we'll move to the meeting procedures. The City of San Rafael remains committed for all participants in real time. For, sorry, I'll start again. The City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in real time, whether that's from here in the chamber or from the comfort of their own home. I want to welcome all that are making this time this evening to participate. Each member of the public will be provided three minutes for comment. This will ensure that we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. Jeff, may you tell us how the public comment will work this evening?
Absolutely. So this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and through Zoom, and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-444-9171. And the meeting ID is 815-0028-1975. Or comment and can, or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and using the raise hand feature. If you wish to speak during a public comment period and participating virtually, you can use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or press star nine if you are phoning in. Folks attending in person will speak first, followed by those participating remotely. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay with the allotted timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. And as mentioned, we are providing Spanish. No, that's not happening. Sorry.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jeff. The following is a refresher on our meeting procedures. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by a presentation from the applicant team. And the Commissioners will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the staff and applicant. I ask the Commissioners to make an effort to ask the entirety of their questions during this time prior to, prior to the close of the public hearing. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. You'll have three minutes for public comment, and we'll start with those present in the chamber and then move on to those who are attending virtually. After public comment, I'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the Commission for any discussion prior to requesting a motion and vote. Okay, we'll move on to urgent communication. Next on the agenda is urgent communication. This is the time for anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda to address the Commission. Are there any members of the public that have urgent communication tonight?
So if so, please come to the podium. Or to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. So with that, if anyone wants to comment on an item not on the agenda with urgent communication?
Anyone online?
I'm looking at, yeah, looking at Zoom and seeing no raised hands.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jeff. I will now move on to the consent calendar, which has one item. Approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 25, 2023. Are there, are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
Yes. So once again, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand. And if on phone, you can press star nine if you want to comment on the meeting minutes.
Seeing none. Okay, great. Okay, are there any comments or edits from the Commission? Okay, I request a motion at this time. Please announce your name prior to the motion or second. I'll request the motion. Chair Sadi. Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Haveman. I'll second the motion.
Great. Okay, would you go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Shock?
Yes.
Chair Sade?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rodby?
I think I need to abstain since I wasn't at the meeting.
No.
Or can I say?
You could actually.
I read up.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
You're not required to, but you are able to vote yes, even if you did not attend the meeting.
Okay, onto our action item. The only action item on tonight's agenda is a request for environmental and design review permit for the proposed replacement of the existing Wild Care Wildlife Hospital and education facilities, and request for a variance with an exception for a proposed fence, or several proposed fencing at 76 Albert Park Lane. Can we hear the staff report?
Absolutely. I'm just gonna pull up my slideshow. Okay, so the item before you tonight is a request for an environmental design review permit for proposed replacement of existing Wild Care Wildlife Hospital and educational facilities with a new attached three-story animal hospital and office building, and relocating and restoring the historic Tewiliger Building on site at 76 Albert Park Lane. In addition, it includes requests for a variance and an exception for proposed fencing. Just gonna bring this down. So the site is approximately 15,000 square feet, and it has a primary entrance facing north, where visitors cross the San Rafael Creek from Albert Park Lane. In addition, it also has frontage on Mariposa Road. And that's particularly used for trash service. The site is in the high-density residential zoning district, and the surrounding uses include single-family and duplex residential to the south and west, light industrial to the east, and open space to the north. Here's a couple of site photos. The one on the left is looking at the front of the site from Albert Park Lane. So you see the creek.
Can you zoom in on those photos?
Oh, oh, thank you. That.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're just.
Oh, that's weird. It's not.
I think, yeah, slideshow like present mode.
Yeah, it's not tracking with, let me try that over. Slideshow. Are you kidding? I'm not sure what's happening here. Let's see. Let's try that again. We'll stop sharing. We'll start showing PowerPoint. There we go. Okay, sorry about that. So, yeah, this was just talking about the site, the 15,000-square-foot site. The front of it faces north, where Albert Park Lane is to the north, as well as the San Rafael Creek. And then Mariposa Road is immediately south of the site. And if we could go down to photos, here we go. So the photo on the left, that is looking from Albert Park Lane at the front of the site. So you can see the creeks in front of it with quite a bit of vegetation. You can barely see the historic Tewiliger Building in the background. And then the photo on the right is from Mariposa Road, and there you can see the Tewiliger Building. So in terms of the proposed project, it includes a major redevelopment of the existing Wild Care facilities. So Wild Care is a wildlife hospital, nature education center, and wildlife advocacy organization. The existing facilities are located in a floodplain and have often flooded in the past, rendering the facilities unusable. The proposal includes relocating and restoring the historic Tewiliger Building to make it a focal point from the main entrance, as well as demolishing all other existing structures on the site. In addition, it includes constructing a new attached three-story animal hospital and office building made of CMU with decorative metal screens, as well as creating a new courtyard for gathering spaces and for the educational ambassador animals. The total area of the proposed facilities and structures is approximately 11,400 square feet, with approximately 4,600 square feet of caging on roofs and 1,600 square feet of caging on the ground, caging being for the animals. Here you see the existing site. It's kind of hard to see, but essentially the main point here is they're taking up their entire site, and in fact, more than their entire site. And so there's some existing improvements, particularly animal caging on the right side. So this is to the east. So here's sort of the dashed line is the property line, kind of where the cursor is. And you can see some improvements are actually falling onto their neighbor's property, as well as minor improvements falling onto their neighbor's property to the west as well. And here is the proposed site plan. So this sort of, the colors aren't showing great here, but basically, here you can see my cursor. The sort of light red color encompasses the new animal hospital building. And then here's the historic Tewiliger Building in purple. And so they brought those to comply with the setback requirements for the zoning district. So they're making a big improvement in terms of bringing, bringing the site into compliance with zoning standards. And I wanted to touch on fencing. So as I mentioned, the site's in a floodplain. The majority of the site is at nine feet above sea level. And so in terms of FEMA floodplain requirements, FEMA requires that non-residential structures are elevated one foot above the base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is just basically the 1% chance of a flood occurring. And so the base flood elevation is at 11 feet, and FEMA requires that non-residential structures be raised one foot above that. So that means they got to get it up to the floor of the new structures at 12 feet. So that's three feet above what they're at currently. So that means they have to provide retaining walls, three-foot retaining walls around the perimeter of the site. In addition, pursuant to USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, regulations for animals, they require six-foot-tall fencing at least three feet from the primary enclosures for animals in order to function as a secondary containment system for the animals in the facility. So basically, they're kind of pinned into a quarter where they have to raise the site by three feet with retaining walls, and they have to have six-foot-tall fencing on the perimeter. And so they're basically required to have nine-feet fencing as measured from existing grade. And so thus needing a variance for fencing in the required front yard, because typically fencing can be up to four feet tall, and then you could go up to six feet tall with an exception, but in this case, it's nine feet. And then they would also need an exception for the fencing in the required rear yard and side yard, because you can go up to nine feet tall with, with an exception for those areas. And I'm happy to talk more about those, but very detailed required findings of approval are included in the draft resolution in your packet. And then here you just see, and here in the graph, you can kind of see this. Right here is showing the three feet, so the existing grade is this dashed line, and the proposed grade is up here. And then here's just showing the west side elevation on the top and the south rear elevation. So with that, except for the fencing, staff finds the proposed project to be consistent with the development standards and design policies in the city zoning ordinance and cities' design guidelines. Staff also finds required findings of approval for the variance and the exception for the fencing can be made. And also on March 7, 2023, the Design Review Board recommended approval of the project as proposed. A couple of you who are very astute and did your homework in looking at the DRB meeting for March 7, and one of the members raised concerns about invasive plants in the creek. However, that was, so I guess to back up, so what the applicant is proposing, they're also doing a bridge replacement project, and they're proposing to remove invasive plants in the creek. That's going to be part of their permits through jurisdictional agencies, so the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Army Corps of Engineers, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And what member Kent from the DRB was asking was just if the city can explore removing other invasive plants along the creek and not in front of the property. So that would be more of a city initiative, not tied to this project. So I just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, so that concludes my presentation. It's been a relatively brief presentation. I'll say this site, and the applicant will go more into it. It's quite a challenging project, and I commend them because they've done a lot of work. The exhibits in the staff report are most of the exhibits, but there's also quite a bit more documentation they've given us to really do some thorough analysis with geotechnical, civil, the whole nine. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Jeff. I was really hopeful. Should we go on to the applicant presentation?
You can actually advance.
Thank you.
I'll get this loaded. See, wrong one. Let's try that again. Here we go.
Hi, here it's a little awkward. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Ellen Weiselman. I'm the Executive Director of Wild Care. I've been with the organization seven and a half years. So I've been on this needing a new building journey for quite, quite some time, as have our wonderful architects. And so we're thrilled. This is a big day for us, as you can imagine, to be here in front of you. I want to shout out to Jeff and City of San Rafael for all the work that's been done in partnership with us to date, because as Jeff said, it's been a really challenging project, and he's just been extraordinary. So Jeff, thank you. A lot of patience, a long windy road to get here tonight. But we're really excited. We're thrilled about this design, really looking at incorporating, you know, the ability to continue to do our work here. As I was saying earlier to one of the Commissioners, I was saying, you know, we looked a lot of places and really came back to, we own this property. This is our home. We feel so much a part of this community, and we want to stay here, and we want Wild Care to be around for the next 100 years. And I loved tonight. I was, part of my presentation was to talk about how important we feel Wild Care is to this community. And, and several of you came up and said, your kids have gone to our camps, and you've come to our courtyard, and you've, you know, there's so many people in this community who Mrs. Tewiliger taught them to love nature. And, you know, this is really about being able to have Wild Care here for generations to come. I did want to point out, the historic building came to us in 1954. It was donated. It was moved to that part of the property, and so being moved again to the front. And we feel that the architects have really created a wonderful design around this historic building and keeping it. And they're going to talk a little bit about that. So I'm going to let, turn this over to them. Again, my presentation tonight was really going to be about the mission of our organization and, and the connection to San Rafael and Marin County and Northern California. As many of you know, we treat 3,500 wild animals a year in our wildlife hospital with always the intent of releasing them to the wild. We work with over 25,000 parents and teachers and kids. We do a lot with the City of San Rafael. We're really excited. We're going to be in your LEAP program, providing after-school programming starting this fall. And we just feel such, such an important part of the work we do is the work we do to this community. So thank you. On that note, I'll turn it over to Cheryl and Jessica, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Lantini, one of the architects with Jessica on the project. And I'm just going to walk you through some of the constraints that Jeff mentioned, but just to kind of summarize in one place, kind of all the challenges and sort of everything that led us to where we are now with the design. I think you, you know some of the challenges of the site right now. I mean, the flooding that's happened, these facilities are well past, you know, their, their usable life. And so, you know, as Ellen said, after searching for the last 20 years for another site, really this decision to stay where Wild Care is, I think, is a great decision for the San Rafael community. So we were super excited to get a look at this project. And I think as Jeff already mentioned, you know, you know the context. So I want to touch on a little bit about some of the things he alluded to, like with the bridge and the creek and sort of what all that meant and how we approached it. I think one of the things that we really recognized as soon as we got the survey is just sort of how much we had to clean up with things built over the property line, over the setbacks. We had the biologists look at the creek early on, so we actually understood what we were dealing with. And that really helped inform us, you know, kind of how we treat the bridge, how we treat the creek, how much we need to back off from it. And that's also, you know, these variances that we need and the fact that we still have to have some caging kind of in that creek setback is just, we finally, you know, just ran out of space again. But I think one of the things we were able to achieve in the course of addressing all these constraints, as hopefully you're seeing, is really highlighting that historic structure, which we also learned early on that we really did need to, to work with and continue to preserve. And as it turns out, you know, it's really a beloved structure from all the people who have been to Wild Care over the years. So, you know, it's actually something that I think the community will really enjoy that we've kept. So kind of all these constraints, I think, really informed the project a lot more than many people might realize. This just kind of highlights all of that sort of overbuilt current site and how far we've had to kind of pull this project back. And then one of the things that Jeff started to mention, that, you know, why we're moving the bridge as well, part of this whole piece to have to raise the site above the base flood elevation means that we've got to get you from street level now up to the site level. And we have to do it accessibly. And obviously, the current bridge does not comply with any of that. So in order to kind of get that length and make it, you know, just a really nice sloped walkway, we've moved it. We've created a different approach. You know, we think it also kind of highlights the new look of the site a lot better as you approach on Albert Park Lane. So this kind of shows you kind of the new context of the site and how everything is pulled back inside the setbacks and really opening up the front. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica to just walk through some of the specific design highlights.
Hi, I'm Jessica Fairchild. I'm the other architect on this project. So I'm just very quickly going to go through the plans. One of the, one of the reasons, as Cheryl said, for moving that bridge is also the grade on the Albert Park side is going ever so slightly up as we go west. So we're gaining just that little bit. So once you come across the bridge, so you're going to come across, and immediately in front of you would be the entrance to the, the new entrance to the building, which is actually part of the new building. To the, to the east is the Tewiliger, and it has access directly from this sort of boardwalk that we're creating, which is going to have a lower fence, much more approachable. You'll be able to see the buildings from across, as opposed to the photo that Jeff showed, which is completely covered. And then basically, on this first level, we'll have education spaces in the Tewiliger. The ambassador courtyard, which I'll show again later, is sort of off to the side so that we don't sort of walk through, since you are familiar with the site, you know, right now you sort of walk right through that area. We're trying to keep a little bit of separation and sort of clean up the circulation on the site. So on this level, there's administrative offices, as I said, in the main entry, and some of the support spaces. And then on the second floor is really the hospital. We've sort of pulled it up and out of the, you know, main flow of people so that the animals are a little bit more protected. So most of the hospital functions are on the second floor, the exam rooms, some of the wards. The pale green, which isn't showing too well on that screen, but on the right and the left, those are actually. those are actually exterior caging that is for the recovering animals. So these are animals that are going to be re-released out to the wild. And one of the most important things is to screen those animals from view. And so there's screening, that's the red lines that you can see sort of wrapping around those two banks of cages. The third floor, which is really essentially the roof, also has the caging for some of the hospital animals, again, that are going to be released, and some mechanical equipment. We are putting solar panels over the top of all of that as well. In terms of the materials, I think Jeff has the actual materials, if anybody wants to actually see them. But basically, we're keeping the historic building distinct and on its, as a separate identity, so we're not sort of repeating what it's built out of, which is wood. The hospital itself is going to be concrete block, a couple of different variations to articulate it a little bit. We need durability, there's animals in there, needs to be hosed down. And then the screening that I talked about, really the idea is that screening not only is going to protect the animals from view, but it also has a reference to that historic building in terms of its openings in it. We need the airflow through it, and it'll sort of reference the historic building. You've already seen these elevations, so I won't go through them, I'll go through them very quickly. That was the front elevation, west, this is west with the fencing on it. South elevation, and then again, south with the fencing shown in front of it. East, and this is the front elevation, and here you can start to really see that idea with that, that metal grill sort of starting to reflect that, the aesthetics of the historic building. It'll have sort of a organic feel to it, but yet not repeating exactly the historic building. And I think, oh, and then this is the Ambassador Courtyard. And again, the idea here is to pull this out of the main circulation path, give sort of a space that, you know, kids can come and actually see the Ambassador animals without being, you know, run over by somebody trying to deliver a little broken bird. And so that's, this is the area, and this is the area that, where the fencing is, is going into that setback on the top, the creek is up on the top of the screen. And that is... Happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. It was really helpful, and you kind of gave more context to the report and the documentation. Are there any questions from any of you guys? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Sade. I do have a couple of just quick questions. Yeah, the new bridge, I think that's terrific, that has to be shifted a little bit west, fine. It rises three feet, so it enters at the top of the retaining wall?
Yes. It doesn't start, it doesn't, it's not a full three feet, because we're a little bit high. We're going up six inches on the Albert Park side with a raised.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
But basically, yes.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the slope of the, of the bridge or anything, I'm just curious how it, if, if I'm understanding right, there's a three-foot retaining wall around the entire property?
Yes.
And most of the facilities are down at the base of that wall?
No.
Oh, it's all, oh, okay. Everything, everything up.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, so it's either a boardwalk, like mostly in the front, or it's literally like the slab.
It's like a plant, yeah.
Like a three-foot plant.
Understood. Okay, great, thank you.
Is there any other? Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, I just had, out of curiosity, mostly, the cages on the roof, are they protected from the elements, or how are they, how does that work?
So they're partially covered, so the ones that are on the very top roof are going to have the solar panels over the top of them, and they're partially covered. I mean, Ellen can probably speak more to it, but these animals are wild animals that are going to be released, and so they need a lot of, that's why that screen is perforated. You know, it's, it's all very open air, because they're basically, they're in wards inside, and then as they get sort of the next level, right before the release, they go into these outside cages.
Great. Any other questions?
Good question. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just have a question in regards to landscaping. I saw that landscaping wasn't involved. Is that due to the, that there's just no room with the creek or?
There, you know, we have some bioswales on the interior of the courtyard, so, you know, those will be planted. I think we kind of gave a, sort of a typical plant list that's suitable for bioswale application. But one of the things that we asked our biologist to do was essentially, you know, give us an appropriate plant list, you know, for how to restore the creek. So really, that's going to guide us in, you know, trying to replace the riparian habitat, and, you know, wherever we can put some trees for shade, we're going to try and do that, but it is extremely limited, as you mentioned. So our focus will really be more of that restoration along the creek of the riparian habitat, rather than any ornamentals or anything like that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I think we'll go ahead and move to the public hearing. Thank you.
So for a public hearing, a public comment, please come up to the podium, or to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have three minutes. With that, if anyone would like to provide public comment? Seeing none.
Okay, none virtually as well.
Yeah, we have five attendees virtually, but I'm not seeing any, any raised hands.
Okay, great, thank you, Jeff. Okay, we'll go ahead then and close the public hearing. And before we vote on the report, can the commissioners have an opportunity to provide any comment and engage in discussion? Why don't we just go down the line? John, would you like to go?
All right, I want to say thanks for this. You know, I've, I've been aware that you've been trying to move or expand in one way or another. I was supportive of the move out of San Rafael when that was in the plan. It disappointed me, because I think San Rafael is better off for having Wild Care in the middle of it. I just want to say, you know, terrific adaptation to the wide variety of constraints. This is, this is an intriguing project, and I'm excited that it's staying here. Fully support the project, and thanks very much.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. I'm going to second what John and what Commissioner Haidman was saying. I'm a big fan of Wild Care, having rescued a few animals through your services before, so thank you. And I just love how much you've really highlighted the historic structure, and you've, you've, I'm just, I'm really excited about this project, and just given all of the limitations, what you've done. I'm also excited about just how you've incorporated, you know, how can you make it? I was curious about the chain link fence, for example, versus the wooden fences, but you've done that to make it more approachable, more welcoming. And, yeah, I'm just really excited, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rodby?
I probably will echo what you guys are saying, that I think it's a beautiful project. It's very impressive that you were able to squeeze all that in into such a small area. I think it was very well done. And I'm also very excited that you're staying in San Rafael, your real asset to our community and to Marin County and to elsewhere. So thank you.
Thank you. Of course, I'll like echo what everyone else has said. I think we all love Wild Care. And it is, I want to thank Jeff, and also the applicant, and the architect, and I know there's like probably dozens of other people that are behind the scenes, and it's impressive to see all of that squeezed in. And it's not just an asset to San Rafael, but I think that site in particular creates a node that is connected to the web of Albert Park and B Street and that whole neighborhood. And without that, I think it would, it'd be a very different place. So I'm really happy that you guys made the extreme effort to stay on the site, and I want to thank Jeff as well, because I know there is a lot of complicated issues related to it. So I think together, we're seeing a really awesome result. So I appreciate those, those things. I also think that the variance exception for the fence is warranted, and I think it's, it's a pretty straightforward item, seeing that the DRB had unanimous approval, and there are really no neighbor comments, and I spoke to the neighbors. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve that, and the, and the major environmental and design review permit. You know, I wanted to just add some comments around how thoughtful the design was, and that you really made the effort to take the historic building and not only make it a focal point, but improve the exterior and make it, you know, bring it back to like its glory. So I think, I think that together with the improvements and having the bridge connect to the outlet of that parking will make it safer. I know you need the grade, but I think the safety with that is huge, because I know most people park, get their stuff together there and move over, so we'll probably see less people jaywalking and being in the right of way. I think with that, it'd be great to get a motion to approve the draft resolution and for, I'm gonna, I'm gonna botch this. Okay, Jeff, can you help me out? I know it's a draft resolution, and then there's a second item on the, on the packet, correct?
Yeah, do you want me to read the, the resolution?
Oh, no. I guess I'm saying, there's nothing in, in addition to the resolution, we're just going ahead and adopting the resolution, correct?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I'd be happy to hear a motion.
As Commissioner Haidman, I will move that we approve the environmental and design review permit variance and exception applications subject to conditions of approval in the draft resolution.
Can we get a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, can we go ahead and do a roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioner Haidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Chair Sade?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Awesome, motion passes. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Now we can go on to all the hard stuff, right? I was kidding. I guess it'll probably be easier at this point. Oh, yeah, I know. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the director's report.
All right, so I think first item is welcoming new Commissioner Jill Rodby. Very excited to have you join the commission. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here, I'm looking forward to getting to know everybody and working with the council. Thank you.
Yeah. And next item, Community Development Director Alicia Judasey emailed you all to let you know that the housing element has now been certified by the state, so that's good news. Kudos to our housing team and our consultant Barry Miller, they worked very hard to get that all, all through, so that's, there's that. And then the only other item is the Northgate Town Square project is going to Designer Review Board next week, July 18. We do need to be careful about really discussing it in any detail, but if you have any questions or comments or thoughts on that project, feel free to reach out to me directly. Yeah.
When, when likely will the next planning commission meeting be on that?
Right, so we anticipate at least two DRB meetings before it comes to planning commission, so I would say likely not until October, yeah, for planning commission.
So we have plenty of time to go through all that material, it's a lot.
Yes, yes. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Oh, oh, yeah, we'll go ahead and, yeah, if you have communication, I think this is the time now. Commissioner Shaw?
Sure, so I was just gonna share, I went to the most recent Design Review Board meeting. So Jeff, I think it might be helpful for you to clarify how planning commission works with Design Review Board, just for our wonderful newcomer here.
Yes, and to be honest, I'm learning as well. So I learned recently that the Planning Commission liaison to the DRB actually sits at the dais, and so that was new information to me. And you're, you are welcome to provide questions or comments on the project, or any projects or items during DRB. So that was, that was new information to me. I don't know if any of you knew that, but, but yeah, correct, you do not vote, correct. And, and I think part of the thing there is just that a lot of the projects end up coming to planning commission, and so it helps if DRB members just kind of have questions, just in terms, in terms of planning commission procedure, or just to kind of have those thoughts in advance from, from one of the commissioners.
Awesome, thank you. And I'm happy to report just on the most recent meeting. It was in regards to the Lexus dealership, so they're looking to expand the Lexus dealership quite significantly. I'm just, I took notes here, so it's on the Lexus dealership right in front of, you know, where Terrapin Crossroads was. They're looking to move it essentially up to the front, where all of the other dealerships are, next to it. And so that increases it from 19,402 square feet to 33,969 square feet, and it includes site renovation, which will involve losing some landscaping. The last time this was approved by the planning commission was in 1999, and they're essentially consolidating two properties, because they've moved out of another location a few blocks down. So the most significant change to it is going to be the exterior. The signage will change a bit as well. The DRB primarily, primarily their feedback was around landscaping. They liked how, how the, the architects included natives, however, they want, perennials have short looming schedules, and so they wanted to be sure that there were some more ornamental plants near the entrance. And then in addition to that, they thought the landscaping was, should, it was a little bit smaller, and they wanted the plants to be bigger. And then they also wanted the light, the lighting to be softened a bit, so I think they had it at 4,000, and they wanted it to come down to 3,500 to 3,000. And other than that, they asked for, what was it, Jeff? They asked for, I'm forgetting, they wanted the palette, they wanted to make sure that moving forward, exactly, that it was physical and it wasn't just electronic. Exactly. So I think, correct me, yeah, if I'm wrong, Jeff, but that's something that's going to be required moving forward for DRB meetings.
It is, yeah. It, it, yeah, it typically has been practiced that we bring those, but that project did not have it, so yeah. And, and that project will not actually come to planning commission, because that one is going to be going to zoning administrators. So some projects are, still require DRB input, but they can actually be approved at staff level, at zoning administrator level, so.
I have a question about the signage. I know when I was on the DRB way back, probably we looked at Northgate 1 before Northgate was being complete, and it was really a discussion around like having, you know, trying to reduce San Rafael's, the image of San Rafael being like, a bunch of signage. So I was wondering if the signage was higher or larger, or how that was dealt with, out of curiosity, more than anything.
Yeah, that wasn't my project. I'm trying to recall, they're, they're adding signage on the building face, not necessarily on the street, if that's, if that's what you're worried about?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's, it's on the building face, it is changed a bit. I believe it's more subdued than it was before to, to maintain brand alignment with Lexus's, Lexus currently versus in 1999. So I think it's, I could, I could get back to you on that.
No, I can, I can go ahead and look at the meeting, it was just really out of curiosity.
Yeah.
But thank you for the detailed, that was a lot of information, it was helpful.
Too much?
No, not at all, no, I loved it. No, I don't think it was too much at all. It's good to have a thorough report, because we don't, you know, we wouldn't know otherwise.
Yeah.
Unless we, we watched the meeting, of course. Do any other planning commissioners have communication? Do any other planning commissioners have communication? Okay. This meeting is adjourned.